The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Waverne City Council held in the council chambers at 6:00 PM Monday, February 28th, last of the month, about that. And we are moving forward here. The first thing we're going to have tonight, we have Council Mickel is away and our city administrator is away. We have Laura as sitting here tonight in as our acting city administrator. So tonight, we have the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting to start off and strategic planning and priorities, meeting held February 14th, 2022. Do I have a motion, please?
I assume of your worship.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Carrie. Additions to the agenda. Acting administrator?
None, none for me.
Counsel? Seeing none, moving forward. Public hearings and notices, none. Delegations, proclamations, and petitions, there are none. Reports to standing committees. We will ask Mr. Van Benshu to lead off with the police commission minutes, if you would, please.
Thank you, your worship. There's a meeting of the Waverne Board of Police Commissions held at City Hall on February 15th, 2022. Correspondence, 2022 CAPG advocacy survey was received by the board to complete, and the city clerk will forward to survey, the survey to all members to complete and submit on their own. Chief Plunden presented the mayor's report for January 2022, which included the Waverne Police Service monthly stats, the Waverne Police Service six-year average, charges for December, medical assist calls, overtime report, and year versus year overtime report. Chairman Cormick advised he's attending a mayor's meeting on mental health and addictions tomorrow. Chief Plunden added a report, community engagement, showing how much time officers spend on community service as a measurable for the police business plan. The accounts payable report for January was provided to the board. Chief Plunden noted the $43,000 from the Rampart International as for the purchase of Glockes, but the city is providing the board a loan to be repaid at yearly installments of $9,000 per year for four years. Counselor Van Benshu inquired if there are expected large expenses that come every year, such as WBM contract and others, can they be amortized over the year instead of appearing at year-end as one big expense? Chief Plunden provided an actual versus targeted budget year-to-date, showing that 8.3% of the allotted year-end budget for 2022, and noted that 87.26% of the equipment count had been used up for year-to-date due to the purchase of the Glock replacement pistols, which, as stated previously, will be amortized over four years. Barclayton Charlton from the board then joined the meeting at 4:44. The bylaw report for January 2022 was provided to the board. All reports were presented and passed as presented. The board moved in camera at 4:45 and back out of camera at 4:56, and the meeting was adjourned at 4:56.
Questions? Seeing none from the council, they will mark that report as read and received. Concerned agenda, cash activity report for January, would please?
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that the cash activity report for January 2022 be accepted as presented.
I can second that, your worship.
Questions? And with that, call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Next, motions, counts payable?
Your worship, I move that purchases in the amount of $1,888,737.55 from February 1st to February 24th, 2022 be passed for payment.
I'll second that, your worship.
Questions from council? Yes, one question I have to our director of engineering, Wilkinson. In one of those statements there, there was a large amount paid to SAS Power. That is for what?
Yes, we put a deposit on the relocation of the power line at the landfill that was pre-approved last year for budget for this year. And so by putting that deposit down, that kicks off the design stage with SAS Power. So they're currently working on the design, and then that project will be completed by the end of 2022.
And so the issue with the power lines is what?
So currently, the power line cuts straight through the landfill, which actually, we have a limitation on where we can move the open face, basically the open face of the garbage. We can only be so close to that power line, so it's restricting our development of the landfill. So by removing that power line, we will have unlimited access within that area now, and we will no longer be encroaching on the power line.
And that is to go north or south, do you know?
The design is, the routing is not completely finalized because we just have to be conscious of the other owners or property around the landfill, so we haven't finalized that yet, but...
More to come. So, all right, any other questions? Seeing none, none, call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Director of Engineering, Wilkinson, you're up next again on 12th Street Water Main Replacement, RFP.
Yes, thank you. So this is for the 12th Street Water Main Replacement. So the 2022 budget has an allocated $200,000, $200,000 for the 12th Street Water Main Replacement. Contractors have been requested to provide and maintain temporary overland water services to 20 residential properties during the duration, replace approximately 202 meters of 150-millimeter water main, AC, and associated infrastructure, contain and dispose of all asbestos cement materials in accordance with the City of Waverne landfill asbestos acceptance procedures, backfill compact and suitably prepare subbase and base for paving. Following this work, the city will require another contractor to repave the affected section of roadway, which is included in the budgeted number of 200,000. Request for proposal, on January 17th, the 12th Street Water Main Replacement Request for Proposal was posted on SAS tenders in the city website. Quotations were to be received by the City of Waverne as of Thursday, February 17th at 1:00 PM, and a total of three proposals were received. All bidders met the requirements as outlined in the RFP, and the bids are summarized below, so you can see the three. So we are making the recommendation that the 2022 12th Street Water Main Replacement Contract be awarded to Torrent Energy Services of Waverne, Saskatchewan, as per the cost detailed and the conditions stipulated in the RFP.
Do I have a motion, please?
Thanks, your worship. I would make a motion that the proposal of Torrent Energy Services of Waverne for the 12th Street Water Main Replacement Contract in the amount of $119,210.22 be accepted as recommended.
Second?
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Discussion, Mr. Van Benshu?
Yes, no real question. I would just like to comment that it's great to see a local company get this bid, as we haven't had local companies bid on this large work very often in the last few years. So it's good to see actually two local companies bid on this project.
Very good. Any other questions? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Again, Director of Engineering, Wilkinson, 2022 asphalt and paving tender.
All right, thank you. So the City of Waverne requires asphalt and paving work for six separate projects in 2022. These projects are budgeted within the Parks Department, which would be the Trails paving, the Utilities Department, so this is paving after water main replacements. It would be the one from last year as well as the one from this year that we just awarded, and the Local Improvement Fund, which would see Saskatchewan Drive, Downtown alleys, and Legion parking lots. So part one is SAS Drive, and that's a repair and recap. Part two, the Trails paving, it's a complete recap of Red Coat Trail portion. Part three, Allen Street, paved the street after the water main replacement that took place in 2021. Part four is 12th Street, and that's to repair the pavement after the water main replacement this summer. Part five is the Downtown alleys, where do a repair and recap, and then part six is a Legion parking lot repair and recap. On January 20th, a request for proposal was posted on SAS tenders in the city website. Quotations were to be received by the City of Waverne by February 16th at 2:00 PM. Total of five bids were, proposals were received, and they were able to bid on any or all parts of the RFP. The bids are summarized below and do not include taxes, so as you can see, there's a breakdown of the five companies and what they bid on each of the portions. Proposals submitted were reviewed to ensure bidders understood the scope of work involved, met the RFP requirements, and to ensure the project delivery schedule could be held. All five of the proposals met all the requirements. It is recommended that all parts of the 2022 asphalt and paving contract be awarded to Jenko Asphalt.
Do I have a motion, please?
Your worship, I would move that the bid of Jenko Asphalt to provide the asphalt and paving contract in the City of Waverne for 2022 in the amount of $482,687.45 be accepted as recommended.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Call the question, or I should say, any questions before we call the question? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. One last one, 2022 concrete and sidewalks tender, if you would.
Yep. So this is for the 2022 pedestrian ramp and Second Street sidewalk replacement. So pedestrian ramps, part one, so the City of Waverne completes an annual program for the installation of accessible pedestrian ramps at priority locations within the city. For the 2022 program, pedestrian ramp installations have been proposed for up to 18 locations at eight different intersections, and the intersections are listed as below. So this is what would have been put in the RFP. There's a total of $35,000 budgeted under public work expenses to complete this work. The second part of the RFP was a sidewalk replacement, and this is the west side of Second Street between Bison and Cotto Avenue. The sidewalk behind the Coop Grocery Store was patched with asphalt and is showing significant degradation. The plan is to excavate the existing sidewalk and replace it with a new concrete walkway. This has been budgeted under the Local Improvements Fund. On January 20th, 2022, a request for proposals was posted on SAS tenders in the city website. The RFP was divided into two parts, and potential bidders were informed they could bid on either or both parts. Quotations were to be received by the City of Waverne on February 4th by 4:00 PM. A total of four proposals were received. Bids are summarized below and do not include taxes. So as you can see, the four bidders below, and they all bid on both parts. So based on the fulfillment of tender requirements and awaited ranking of the bid results according to the selection criteria provided, it is recommended that part one, the accessible pedestrian ramps, be awarded to GRI Construction for up to a total value of $35,000 to align with the budget. So in this situation, we would be eliminating some of the original proposed locations to align with the budgeted amount. And then it is recommended that part two, the concrete walkway installation on Second Street, be awarded to GRI Construction as per the cost detailed and the conditions stipulated in the RFP.
Do I have a motion, please?
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to make a motion that the proposal of GRI Construction to provide accessible pedestrian ramps as specified locations in the amount of $46,500 and concrete walkway installation on Second Street between Bison and Cotto Avenue in the amount of $13,500 be accepted as recommended.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Questions?
Thank you, your worship. Jen, I asked you this earlier, but you're comfortable, and you've worked with GRI Construction before?
Yeah, we worked with them before, actually. It was a different name, but they were ones that worked with us last year.
Any further questions? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Director of Finance, Michelle, 2021 year-end property tax arrears, if you would speak to that, please?
Yes, so in accordance with Section 3 of the Tax Enforcement Act, there's a list of properties that have unpaid taxes at December 31st, 2021. So these properties, upon notice, have 60 days to pay all their tax arrears and the applicable fees, and after 60 days, a lien will be registered on the title of the property if it's still unpaid. So the total, just over 245,000.
Do I have a motion, please?
Your worship, I move that the tax enforcement arrears list for 2021 totaling $245,147.78 provided by the city accessor be accepted as presented.
I'll second that, your worship.
Questions?
Thanks, your worship. Laura, is there a trajectory here? Are we seeing more of this than in previous years?
So I looked back, and last year it was just under 200,000, so it has gone up a bit, but...
Mr. Van Benshu?
Thank you, Laura. I just, I think you get asked this probably every year, but I just want to, this is all governed by the city's act, and when a person gets a lien put on their property, if they don't pay, we have no control over that. We have to do it. It is a serious incident, like they should try and pay their taxes, but it isn't anything that the city has any choice over?
No, that's correct. We have to follow what's in the city's act. I'll add to that, sorry, I'll add that we do work with the homeowners, like if they want to go on payment plans and to try to get it paid, because obviously we want them to pay their taxes and pay it up.
With that, call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. City Clerk, Victor, Waverne Senior Beavers Baseball 2022 liquor permit.
Thanks, your worship. So the Waverne Beaver Baseball Club is once again requesting a resolution of council in support of their application to SAS Liquor and Gaming to serve alcohol, I guess beer, at all of their home games for the 2022 baseball season. The City of Waverne is not the approving authority for a liquor permit. This approval is made by SLGA. The City of Waverne just has to approve supporting them to make the application, as that's a requirement of SLGA. I spoke to the police chief and to our Leisure Services Department, and they both, in the Parks Department, I should say, and they both have no concerns in the past. They have been doing this for several years, there's been no problems, so they are in support of city council approving, approving this application. So I would recommend that we go ahead and make a resolution to support their application for a liquor license for their season.
Do I have a motion, please?
Thanks, your worship. Yeah, I'll make a motion that the request from the Waverne Senior Beavers Baseball Club to make application to SAS Liquor and Gaming to sell alcohol during all home games for the 2022 baseball season at Tom Lang Park be approved.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Questions, comments?
Only a comment to thank the Beavers for getting back at it this year and all they do for our community.
Yes, I'll echo that, and it's nice to see that baseball is back in again. Hopefully, everybody will be out to support them. Call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Director of Leisure Services, Mr. Crowe, this year up, the 2022 Boulevard Tree Pruning RFP.
Thanks, your worship. So as approved through the city budgeting process, there's $30,000 allocated towards contracting out a third-party vendor to assist the Parks Department with their tree pruning maintenance program. We're looking at several Boulevard locations throughout Waverne as we go to work through the whole city over the next few years. So the City of Waverne is currently responsible over 8,000 city trees throughout the urban forest, which require ongoing maintenance and pruning to help them thrive. The Parks Department has identified seven priority areas to be included in the 2022 Boulevard Tree Pruning Contract, where trees will be pruned based on the need across the locations located below. The contractor will work through the priority areas in order, pruning no more than 350 trees in total, to avoid any budget overages. So you'll see the seven priority areas that we've identified for this year. So through the identified areas that are listed there, we have, they have all been home to a high number of elm trees, and we've seen Dutch elm disease in those areas in the last few years. Therefore, the elm trees will be prioritized over other species of trees in those areas to try to take care of the necessary pruning that needs to be done to keep them healthy to avoid further outbreaks. So in the event that not all the trees that require the pruning are addressed this year, we'll carry those trees over into the 2023 season. So a request for proposal was posted on the City of Waverne SAS Tenders websites on January 18th, 2022, and closed on February 10th at 2:00 PM. Unfortunately, this year, we only received one bid. So only one was received, which was provided by Green Drop Limited. The proposal showed a high level of understanding and met all bid requirements and did come within our budget expectations for what we wanted to do this year. Green Drop completed both our Boulevard Tree Pruning and our Tree Inventory contracts in 2021. Both of those contracts were completed in a timely manner, and the performance and professionalism were more than satisfactory. So based on a full assessment of the proposal received, confirmation of the required certificates, experience in Dutch elm disease control, pricing, and a positive previous experience working with the contractor, the Leisure Services Department would like to recommend that Green Drop Limited of Regina, Saskatchewan be awarded the 2022 Boulevard Tree Pruning Contract to prune approximately 350 trees throughout the listed priority areas at a cost of $29,750 plus applicable taxes.
Do I have a motion?
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to make a motion that the bid of Green Drop Limited to provide Boulevard Tree Pruning at the location set out in the amount of $29,750 be accepted as recommended.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Discussion, go ahead.
Thanks, your worship. Andrew, thanks for your report. This is very good. I'm oftentimes struck by the volume of trees that we have, 8,000 trees in our community that we're responsible for, so that's a, that's a big job. I watched these folks last year. I think they did a very good job, but I am always concerned when we only get one, a bid. Do you have any sense of why there's, there's no competition for this work?
To be honest, no. We reached out to all of those who submitted bids last year to give them a heads-up that we would be posting again. We used all the same channels for posting. They were just the only ones that provided us with the price. And honestly, the price that they gave us probably would have came in at the low end had we received bids from all the other vendors as well. So I'm not too worried about that. They do a really good job. We've had good success with them. They understand our city and what we're looking to accomplish, so no concerns from us on that.
Okay, thank you.
Pretty good. Call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Jubilee Park Electrical Distribution Replacement, Mr. Crowe.
Okay, so as approved through the city budgeting process, there was $65,000 allocated towards the removal of the West Washroom Building in Jubilee Park. The building currently houses electrical components and irrigation infrastructure utilized by the park, which need to be updated and relocated in above-ground vaults, as we call them, prior to the demolition of those buildings. So all water and sewer and gas service formerly servicing the Parks Building were actually cut off during the construction of the Credit Union Spark Center, so the washrooms are no longer usable in that building, and it's really just sitting there. It's kind of a eyesore in the park. So the Leisure Services Department, we contracted out WSP of Regina, they're an electrical engineer, to supply the specifications, advertise and administer the tender for work, and receive bids from vendors to replace the existing electrical distribution currently located within the washroom building. Within this RFP or within this contract, they will also be putting down a new pad and then installing the new distribution for the electrical. So contractors are to relocate all existing loads that are currently connected to the distribution and use. All components are to be rewired and all new services provided. So again, a request for tender was released to the industry. That process was handled by WSP Regina on behalf of the City of Waverne. However, we still posted to our website, and we still utilize SAS tenders. Bid packages were provided also to local contractors, and as I mentioned, posted on our website. Again, through this process, we only received one bid, which came in from Industrial Electric. And based on a full assessment completed by WSP on our behalf, the proposal, of the proposal received, it was confirmed that they held all the requirements we were looking for, and the pricing was within what we should expect. So based off of that information and the city's positive previous work experience with the contractor, the Leisure Services Department would like to recommend that Industrial Electric of Waverne, Saskatchewan be awarded the Jubilee Park Electrical Distribution Replacement Contract at a cost of $31,043 plus applicable taxes.
Do I have a motion, please?
Your worship, I would move that the bid of Industrial Electric of Waverne, Saskatchewan to provide Jubilee Park Electrical Distribution Replacement in the amount of $31,043 be accepted as recommended.
I'll second that, your worship.
Comments? Mr. Richards?
Thanks. Because I asked the question last time, I'm going to ask it this time, but I think it's important to distinguish that this was not necessarily the City of Waverne's tender. Yes, it was, but it was not issued by us, it wasn't managed by us or received by us. WSP did this all on our behalf as part of the greater contract to manage the construction of Spark Center, correct, so far?
Yes, that is correct.
Right, so the fact that there was only one bidder, a little bit outside of the city's control this time, in that it would have been their role to maybe instigate more, although I'm perfectly happy with who we have because we've seen their work.
Yeah, so they acted on our behalf, but again, they used all the channels that we would have used. They contacted locals directly. Just for some reason, we only received one bid. However, I will add that this bid did actually come in lower than what we were expecting, so we're happy with what we see and more than happy to move forward in the contract with them.
Thank you.
Comments?
Andrew, just for clarity for anyone whom West Washroom Building isn't completely clear, that's the one closest to the swimming pool in the Spark Center, not the one that's near the 13th Street parking lot.
Correct, yeah, it's the one just to the south of the Spark Center.
Mr. Van Benshu?
Yeah, I just have one question, Andrew. So in the $65,000 that was budgeted, I suspect that that also includes the demolition of the building and...
Yeah, so we're hoping that we can handle most of the demolition in-house with public works support, and then we also have to put in a small water vault for the irrigation equipment that's in that building, the valves and stuff, but at a much lower cost than the electrical components.
Any further questions? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. There's no introduction of new bylaws, no unfinished business, new business, development, levy request? Janine, if you would, please?
Yes, so there are two items that I have in front of me, and they are related, so I think I will do both reports, and then there will be two motions that have to be made at the end, if that works. So the first is the request for the waiver of off-site development levy for 744 McClellan Street. The report relates to development permit application 2022.006 for the development of an addition to a community recreation facility and nursery school at 744 McClellan Street. The applicants, The Family Place, have submitted a letter to council requesting that all or part, part of the off-site development levies for the development permit be waived. The development officer has advised the applicants that the full off-site development levy of 451 per square foot would be applicable to the floor area of the addition that is proposed. As per the bylaw, Section BII, "Proposals involving development or redevelopment of residential, commercial, industrial, or institutional site with area of less than one acre where no subdivision is occurring and/or where municipal services are to be utilized," will pay the development levy as per the classes of development calculations above. The class of development for commercial, industrial, institutional is charged at 451 per square foot. This levy would apply to the new floor area proposed in the addition... This levy would apply to the new floor area proposed in the addition, which is 2,976 square feet. Therefore, the off-site development levies would be $13,421.76 for the addition and would be a condition of the development permit approval. The applicants have requested that the off-site development levy be waived in part or in full. The development proposal, the addition includes 2,976 square feet of new ground floor area, which is more than doubling the size of the existing 1,900-square-foot building, so the intensity of use and density of the development is increasing. Additionally, there are at least five new toilets, three sinks, and laundry facilities, and a full kitchen proposed in the addition portion, so the proposal will have additional impact on the city's infrastructure and services. And the intent of the off-site development levy is to offset the costs of the additional impact. As per Section 6C of the bylaw, where a development proponent believes there are special circumstances which may warrant a variation from the full off-site development levy, they shall submit a report to the development officer and the development officer report to council for consideration, and council may by resolution approve the development officer's recommendations, approve such other variation and/or change, change to distribution as council may, in its discretion, determine or deny the variation and advise the applicant of the right to appeal. So, staff recommendation, given that the proposal is increasing the square footage of the building and the intensity of the use on the property, the development officer would recommend that the applicant's request to waive the off-site development levies be denied, and that the full levies of $13,421.76 be included as a condition of the development permit. And then I'll just read about the development permits so you know what you're looking at. So, the discretionary use development permit application has been received for the development of an addition to a community recreation facility and nursery school at 744 McClellan. The site is currently zoned R1 residential detached, and both recreation, community recreation facility and nursery school are considered discretionary uses in that zone. Council had approved the change of use for the existing building on July 19th of 2021, and the applicants are now proposing to build an approximately 2,976-square-foot addition plus a basement. The subject property is located on McClellan Street, just south of Fifth Avenue, and they've previously changed the use of that building. So, there's an aerial imagery of the property as it currently stands and the location of it, as well as a map of the zoning. And then there's a site plan that they've submitted showing the addition and the parking that's proposed and the outdoor area that they'll be using. And then there's a main floor building plan and a basement floor plan as well. And elevation drawings of what the new addition will look like. So, as discretionary uses, a neighborhood notice is required to be sent out to all residents within a 75-meter radius of the subject property, notifies them of the application and the opportunity to provide their concerns and feedback to council. Notices were sent out on February 10th, and staff received one letter of objection from a neighbor with concerns primarily about traffic and parking. The letter had been attached to the report. The property is designated residential in the OCP, and the following policies are applicable. Complete communities where residents can live, work, and play. A policy states that uses such as care homes and daycare centers will be facilitated, facilitated in all compatible areas of the city. A policy states that the primary use of land within residential areas will be residential, however, complementary, institutional, and community uses are also permitted, for example, schools, et cetera, daycares, and other commercial activities. So, zoning bylaw, the R1 zone is designed to provide for the development of predominantly single-detached dwellings, with some compatible uses such as schools, daycares, and nursery schools, and religious institutions are also permitted and discretionary in that zone. The proposal is for an addition to the existing community recreation facility and associated nursery school building at 744. The addition is approximately 2,976 square feet on the main floor with a basement. Both uses are discretionary uses in the R1 zone. Section 4.5 of the bylaw regulates daycare centers and nursery schools, and the intent of these regulations are to ensure compatibility between the provision of daycare and nursery services, and intended to encourage dispersion of those services throughout the city so they're available at convenient locations. And the following are applicable to the application, and they are the indoor place space standards, and the applicants are proposing more than enough space to accommodate the 25, 24 children that they may have at the facility at one time. And then the outdoor place space standards, the applicant is proposing an outdoor place space of 173 square meters, which is sufficient to accommodate 24 children based on that requirement. The development is required to have 16 parking spaces, including one barrier-free, and they have proposed 16 parking spaces, and therefore, the site meets the parking requirements. The proposed addition complies with the maximum height and minimum setback requirements in the zoning bylaw. So, as mentioned, the off-site development levies would be applied to the addition as per the bylaw, therefore, they would be $13,421.76 for the addition and would be a condition of the development permit approval. The applicants have requested that the lever, levy be waived, waived in part or in full, and have provided that report. So, council would have three options tonight, to approve the development permit without further conditions, approve the development permit subject to the following conditions: minimum of 16 off-of-street parking spaces. In accordance with Section 4.6 of the zoning bylaw, a barrier-free path must be provided from the barrier-free parking stall to the barrier-free entrance to the building. Parking areas must be maintained as dust-free, gravelled, or hard-surfaced areas. The development shall, shall comply with Section 4.5 zoning bylaw. Off-site development levies shall be due upon development permit issuance unless council changes that tonight. And the bill, a building permit shall be required, public health and fire department inspections, and they shall comply with provincial acts and regulations. Or option number three would be to refuse the development permit for the addition. And staff recommendation would be that development permit application meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw in terms of use, parking height, and building setbacks. Therefore, staff are recommending option number two to approve the discretionary use development permit 2022.006 with the conditions listed. The applicants are here tonight, so if council has any questions, Dawn and Judy are here tonight, so they are in the audience right now.
So, let's deal with, I guess, the, first off, the development permit first, or the, the levy?
Yeah, I'll, I'll put a motion on the floor for discussion. Your worship, I would make a motion that the request of the family place to waive the off-site development levy fees be denied, and the full levies of $13,421.76 be included as a condition of the development permit for the proposed addition at 744 McClellan Street.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Go ahead.
Thanks, your worship. So, first off, to be clear, good project, and I voted for it back in July to go where it's going, I think. Oh, sorry, I can see you, you can't see me, maybe. You're probably better off if you can't...
Or if you would, please, Dawn, come to the podium.
So, so, so I want to be clear, I, I support this project, and I have from the beginning, and I support the location of the project, but it doesn't come without some controversy, that's for sure, and I think we know that. So, the reason I made the motion the way that I did was because I do think that this is exactly what the, the off-site development levy was built for. That's why this policy is in place, because there is going to be a significant increase in the use of city services in and around this as a result of the change of use. So, I am really, although I, I hate to saddle the family place with a bill like that, our, I guess, our, our greater duty, if I could say it that way, is to everybody in Weyburn, right? So, that's kind of where I land on this. There will be other options available to you, and I think Janine has probably told you about some of those things already, so that's where I'm at, and I, I do, though, wish you all the success in the world at that location. I think it's the right thing to do.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Van Betje?
Yes, I echo what Counselor Richard said, and I'm sure glad he said it because I could never worry, worry it as well as he did, but, you know, certainly a strong supporter of the family place. The levy is put in place for that reason, to help to pay for additional costs associated to higher traffic and increased wear and tear on our infrastructure, so it is, it is an unfortunate cost of, of building progress, and I, I commend you for, for the family place for growing and, and looking for a place that is going to be bigger and better than what you have already, and I certainly encourage you to look at the other avenues that there are for, for, you know, grants or saving on some funding in other locate areas.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Councilors Richards and Van Betje, you already said what I was going to say, but yeah, I would, I think we're very supportive of the family place, and I would encourage you to look into the other financial options available and definitely work with Janine, you know, along those lines.
Absolutely, thank you.
Janine, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, and again, I don't want to sound like a broken record. I'm a very big fan of the family place, both my girls used all of your programs, and I couldn't be the great mom I am, yeah, I guess, without the family place programs. But, you know, I get it, it's a, a large upfront cost with any construction project, but we have to be mindful, mindful of the taxpayers' dollars, and there's such a fine line, we want to help everybody we can, but we just come off, came off passing a very difficult budget, especially with COVID and the way the economy is going, so, again, I support your project 100%, but, and I would love to give you the $13,000 waiver, but we just can't.
Janine, the hospital, even the new hospital, they're moving forward with their, we're getting levy from them, are we not?
I don't believe we've had any development permits for that, so the levy hasn't been discussed at this point.
I thought there was a discussion that there wasn't, that there weren't going to be, that, well, like, there's no going to be no development break on the, for that, even on the hospital project, because again, it's a put-in, we were asked, as the government, pushed it down years back, that we have to use this to develop our streets and our water and sewer and everything else, and that's why the levy was placed, put into place, and that's how we develop our city. So, with that being said, further comments?
Your worship, I'm not going to repeat what everybody else said.
Okay.
So, I'll just say ditto.
And I just...
So, all right, so with that being said, your, the, before, the motion before council is to, again...
Is to deny the application, but rather to apply the full levy.
Yeah, I don't think you're wrong.
I'll say that again. To deny the application and to then apply the full levy. Your worship, if I may, as point of order, I think Dawn had something else to say.
I just wanted to say that, as my letter stated, we were fully aware of everything you guys mentioned tonight, and I just want to tell you that I appreciate your time on that matter, and we fully understand, so thank you for your support in our mission.
Call the question, all in favor? Carrie, Carrie DeNams. Then, next.
Well, I'd like to end the meeting off on a good note, so I'll happily make the motion that the development permit application 2022.006 for an addition to the community recreation facility and nursery school at 744 McClellan Street, subject to the presented, pardon me, be passed, subject to the presented conditions.
Since I made the first motion, I'd like to second this motion, your worship. Thank you.
Okay, discussion? Mr. Van Betje?
Thank you, worship, yeah. Like, we did have a letter of concern, I think there has been some residents that have had concerns about traffic issues and U-turns and whatnot, and as a member of the police board, you know, we will certainly bring it to the police's attention that they will patrol these areas and, and check to make sure that the rules of the road are being followed and that we are protecting the children in the area as else, all the children that are going to the school.
I guess, Dawn, the one question I have is that with passing up this levy, that the beginning of construction is slated for what time? What timeline do you have?
Depending on how the quotes come back, we're actually just waiting on an engineer to get the mechanical and plumbing drawings done, but we are hoping that by fall, we would be in progress with the build.
Very good. Call the question, all in favor? Carrie DeNams. Good luck with the project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Inquiries and announcements, the first off, I guess, City Clerk Richter, the lights at City Hall?
Yes, your worship. Council has instructed administration to light up City Hall in blue and yellow in solidarity with the Ukraine nation, and, and obviously, we all know what's happening there, your worship. So, tomorrow, we will implement blue and yellow lights on the front of City Hall, so tomorrow night, when you're driving by, we hope to have those.
For an undetermined amount of time till we see how it is?
Yeah, we haven't really set a time, but we will just continue to have those for the time being.
Mr. Van Betje?
Thank you, worship, to follow up on what our city clerk Richter had just mentioned in light of the situation in the Ukraine. And for those of us that can find it in our hearts and our wallets, I think we have the opportunity to, through the Red Cross in Canada, the government will match every dollar that is given with another dollar, and to go towards helping these people in the Ukraine. A lot of them that are leaving Ukraine are going into poorer countries like Poland and Romania and whatnot, and they can't afford to, to support these people as well as they need to be supported, so I, I ask the citizens of Weyburn to think about these people and dig in their wallets if you can, every little bit helps, and I, I think we're all very fortunate to live where we are, we don't have to dodge bullets, and, and we are so fortunate, and I think, let's think of everybody else over there. Thank you.
Mr. Jenke, did you have a comment? No?
No, your worship, I would echo what Counselor Van Betje said, and, I mean, if you are making that donation, remember that we're not just helping out the people in the areas that are affected directly, but in Poland and the surrounding communities, they've hit a lot of economic hardship as a result of what's going on, too, so this is in some ways an economic stimulus for the whole area, so it's a win-win for all concerned.
Any further comments? And as, as said in the, the other, this cover Weyburn, there will be a conduit to any government projects, how the government rolls out at once, we'll pass along that the role of the city within here to be a conduit of any programs that go forward, that both federal government and provincial government move forward with it. No, there's no notice of motions, and with that, we will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.